I now call the meeting to order. This is a session on administration of justice and legal administration. I would like to welcome the Secretary for Justice and Judiciary Administrator. I will invite the S for J to give an introduction, to be followed by J A's introduction. So please keep your speaking time to five minutes and then I'll invite questions from members. Please press the button if you want to speak. S for J. In 2020, the total budget for the Department of Justice is 2.3 billion, an increase of 31.7%. There's a slight increase due to the number of cases handled and manpower increase. We're going to create 15 new posts to cope with the new demand in need for offering legal advice to government departments. On briefing out, as at the time of preparing the budget, and we have come up with a budget which is called prudent in nature, the outcome would depend on the actual of cases briefed out. The S A government is committed to safeguarding our status as a half for international law and dispute resolution office. An office, dedicated office, has been set up under my department to coordinate the DOJ's work in the field of dispute resolution and its promotion. The office would work with other jurisdictions and international organizations in entering into the partnership of cooperation agreement. And in Hong Kong and elsewhere, we are going to organize activities for international participants. And we also encourage similar programs to be hosted here and in other countries. We are going to have a seminar on model trade law on the 9th of January this year. We work with the Ministry of Justice of Japan and we signed a cooperation agreement so that we can step up cooperation. The Department of Justice also invested resources into capacity building so that we can seek new opportunities in the mainland and barren road countries. Let me now briefly talk about the work of my divisions in the department. Criminal prosecution will continue to work in accordance with Code on Prosecutions and deal with prosecution work professionally, fairly and impartially. Since the 1st of July last year, we have uploaded the brief summaries of important judgments for reference. And through Prosecution Week and other international seminars in Hong Kong, promote the spirit of the rule of law and also to raise the awareness of the public and the international recognition of our legal system. Civil law, we provide legal advice to the government and we represent the government in responding to judicial review cases. These are the duties of the Civil Division. Last year, there were 3,000 cases applying for agreement, for leave in respect of judicial review. 90%, 5% of them about refoulement claims. There were 650 cases, 85 of these cases went for the government. The public can have access to judicial review so as to make sure that the administrations work within the limits of the laws. We have also come up with Judge Over Your Shoulder publication. This is based on actual cases and legislation. The publication was uploaded to our website this year. The Civil Division will also launch a training program for young barristers so that they know more about civil work in my department. And we have also set up an inclusive dispute avoidance resolution office. There was an activity based on the previous protocol and a media first press event was organized. And there was a training course on international settlement of investment disputes. We also have a pilot scheme in Karum West. The legal aid provided by Hong Kong is important. We also provide professional legal support to government departments in order to step up the liaison with the legal professions. We have met with the Bar Association and Law Society regularly. On the 23rd of January 2019, we signed an M O U meeting the records with the Mainland Ministry of Judiciary. The Mainland Authority has agreed to increase cooperation with the legal professions in Hong Kong. It's hoped that the relevant arrangement can be put in place in 2019. In recent years, the Department of Justice also works towards the promotion of our status as a half for dispute resolution. We have used the, well, the renovation of the previous East Wing of C G O is about to complete. In the latter half of this year, the premises will be made available for relevant practitioners and organizations in this view. We have organized the fifth Hong Kong Legal Service Seminar in Guangzhou in our effort to promote Hong Kong's special status as International Dispute Resolution Centre. The Department of Justice also, in 2017, after enacting the arbitration and mediation legislation amendment ordinance, we have come up, we have published a cohort of practice which came to effect on the 1st of February this year. The new provisions concerning the funding of third-party funding issue resolution will come into effect on a separate date. We support N G Os in establishing the online platform, the C B R A M platform. In due course, we are going to seek funding approval from the Finance Committee of this council. In March, in early March this year, in order, we have come up with a, we have completed the public consultation on the new arrangement for handling the matrimonial cases, et cetera. On the 18th of January, we have signed with the Supreme People's Court an arrangement to enforce on mutual and reciprocal recognition and enforcement of judgment in civil and commercial matters so as to avoid duplication of litigations. We are going to consult the public on the details in due course. And we have also signed with on the agreement on reciprocal recognition and enforcement of dispute judgments so that requests can be sought in either jurisdiction. We conducted a consultation exercise on bankruptcy arrangements and we would talk to the mainland counterparts to improve the business environment and the arrangement for handling bankruptcy cases. On the, the report on here said will be taken forward with, together with the relevant panel of this council so that we can move ahead with the times. Our law drafting divisions handle the drafting instructions issued by the government. Would you please speed up? You have exceeded the time we have. I know what you are trying to say, but please continue, Secretary. We have a compulsory database and electronic version has been prepared. The International Law Division also participated in international cooperation arrangements. Thank you for giving me so much time to give an introduction.
Judiciary Administrator, thank you, Chairman. In accordance with the budgetary arrangements agreed between the judiciary and the government in 2005, the judiciary submitted its resource requirements for 2019 to 20 to the government prior to the government showing up of the 2019-20 budget for the judiciary. The draft estimates of the, for the judiciary amounting to $2,109.5 million, representing an increase of $278.8 million. In terms of judicial manpower, we propose to increase three additional judicial posts of district judge to strengthen the establishment of the family court to cope with its increased workload. Over the past years, the judiciary has been launching open recruitment exercises fulfilling judicial vacancies at appropriate timing. At the judge of the court of first instance of the High Court level, the judiciary has conducted a new exercise of recruitment launched in mid-2018. So far, four C F I judges have been appointed from the latest recruitment exercise. As for district court judge level, the new round of recruitment exercise was launched at the end of 2018. For permanent magistrates, the new round of recruitment was launched in March 2019. The judiciary is also taking forward proposals to extend the retirement ages for J J Os, judges and judicial officers. The government has introduced a bill on the necessary legislative amendments for the implementation of this arrangement to the Legiscope in March 2019. We hope the legislative exercise could be completed within the middle of this year. Through these arrangements, we hope to attract suitable talents in joining the judiciary and will also be able to retain talents. We'll continue to monitor judicial manpower and, under practical circumstances, we will also appoint temporary and deputy J J Os to cope with the increased workload. For non-judicial manpower, we propose to increase 65 civil service posts. First, we propose to create a permanent A O S G B one post, Administrative Officers Staff Grade B one post, to have a new planning and quality division to be set up in the judiciary administration. To strengthen directorate support to the Chief Justice's private office, we also propose to create a permanent A O S G C post to be designated as Deputy Administrative Assistant to provide enhanced administrative support to the Chief Justice. We also need additional staffing support for many new and ongoing initiatives. They include providing support to the additional judicial posts to cope with the workload of family court and also enhance court security measures in law court buildings as well as providing support to two new mega accommodation projects and continuous review. J A, please speed up. We're running out of time. Finally, in 2019, in the end of February, relating to the proposed creation of the permanent post, we consulted the Panel on Administration of Justice and Legal Services. We're happy to have received support from panel members. We will, in due course, proceed to submit the proposals to the Establishment Subcommittee for Enforcement and the Finance Committee for approval. Thank you, Chairman. All right, next member, Mr. Holdon Chow, four minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is J A 013, that's the reply zero number. I raise this question, I'd like to ask the Judiciary Administrator. The question was about screens for shielding purposes at the hearing of cases involving sex offenses. I'd like to know the number of cases involved in the use of screens at different court levels. According to your reply, for the High Court, I see that the percentage was quite high in 2016, 2017, over 80%. Of course, in 2018, the figure dropped to just 50% or so. For the district court and magistrate's courts, in terms of the screen, cases with the screens used, the figures tend to be on the low side, below 50%. So my question is, according to this percentage, because we're talking about screens for protecting witnesses in sexual offenses, of course, we encourage the more use, you know, more frequent use of screens. Now, for district courts and magistrate's courts, the percentage is quite low. I want to know whether the judiciary has any measure to encourage the use of screens for victims in sexual offense cases, because the shields would provide protection for witnesses. So, J A.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, as mentioned in our reply in B about the number of screen applications, it's actually the party involved that submitted the applications. I think that they submitted the application based on a number of considerations. And this is just a very rough figure kept by the judiciary. In fact, we have provided another set of figures to show that the majority of applications were indeed approved. And I think the figures already show the reality, Chairman. Let me supplement. I noticed in the reply about the number of applications approved, I agree that basically the approval rate is very high. Basically, all applications were approved, save and except a few cases. But that's just my comment. Well, the number of applications might be one consideration. I need to emphasize that the design of the screen in courtrooms is to protect the relevant witnesses, especially vulnerable witnesses. So I hope that in the future, there will be some encouragement measures for more witnesses to use screens. Any, any comment? J A, thank you. Next, Dr. K K Kwak, four minutes. My, I'd like to ask a number of questions relating to S J 031, 040, 039, et cetera. Well, recently, an author made a prediction that is to take away the essential elements of our legal system. I think it's, you can already achieve success if you appoint Theresa Chang as the Secretary for Justice to destroy the legal system. What is the better way, what is a better way to destroy our legal system? By, well, Dr. K K Kwak, please ask questions directly related to the, to the draft estimates. Well, S J 031, I asked the number of visits to liaison office and we are very concerned about the F O O, the Surrender Futitive Offenders Ordinance. I'd like to know how many visits you made to the liaison office? Any response, S J? We already gave a reply in writing. Due to operational needs, I'm asking you, S J. Well, your subordinates may not be able to put it down in the logbook, but you yourself cannot recall how many times you visited the liaison office? Well, due to operational needs, sometimes you use office vehicles. Well, no matter what transport you take, the M T R, otherwise, I ask how many times have you visited the liaison office? Yes, I have. I have not counted how many times because due to operational needs, sometimes we need to visit different places under different circumstances to meet with different people. Well, what did you say to the people there in the liaison office, S J? Is it after the, is it, is it about the surrender of fugitive offenders? Well, S J, is it related to the budget? If it is not related, you can choose not to answer. It is not related to the draft estimates. That's really sneaky. We're concerned about the rule of law. You let C Y L go and also you propose the S F O arrangement. Well, our rule of law is undermined. We're regressing. In the past, we also had government officials involved in contract of interest cases, Donald Zhang, Raphael Hui, Timothy Tong, and you briefed out counsel to seek external legal advice on the C Y L incident. However, you just let him go and then you had the U B W scandal, you just put the blame on your husband. Anyway, my question is, that is very clear in my questions. I asked how many times the Secretary for Justice answered the returning offices in relation to the disqualification of elected candidates? How many, how much resources were spent? As we mentioned in the reply, we did not record in particular the time spent on any particular matter. Well, what about the disqualifying Chow Ting? How much time was spent? Well, I, my reply is the same. We do not keep time spent on any particular issue. We do not keep such a record. What a Secretary for Justice is really such a shame. Well, we have no rule of law and the D O J is nothing but a prosecution tool. And the Secretary for Justice continues to sit here and rule Hong Kong with your kind of logic. What about one country, two systems, a high degree of autonomy and rule of law? I think she is destroying everything. I think, I think I'll save for another round. Next, Mr. Dennis Kwak. I'd like to follow up on S J 041. The question about briefing out expenses, especially in relation to civil cases, in particular civil cases, construction cases and judicial review cases. And last year, at the same meeting, I also asked the secretary a similar question. I asked for a list for the secretary to give me an analysis about the chambers involved. And then in, on the 25th of June 2018, you provided a reply with a list of chambers who, which got the cases briefed out. I'm not asking about any particular barrister. I'm asking about a list that you should supply in your supplementary answer, about the chambers which were given the cases. Can you do that, S J? We'll do that as soon as possible. All right, please provide the supplementary written reply later. Next question I'd like to follow up is J A 023 about time, waiting time for judgment. I think that, J A, you would know that I've been following up on this matter for many years. We believe the real picture is not as you have presented in your set of figures. Because from the legal profession and from my personal experience, we know that very often, in particular for the court of first instance presiding over civil cases, definitely, the waiting time would be longer than 53 days. Very often, it would take three months, six months, one or even two years before a written judgment is finally handed down. So for cases involving a waiting time of six months or over six months, whether there'll be a record of such written judgment in civil cases, whether you have a record of such cases taking more than six months of waiting. Who would take the question? J A? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Dennis Kwak, for your question. As we set out in the reply, this is the average time taken. And we are talking about the, you know, the actual time taken for the cases is just the average. And the, in fact, it may not be as accurate, in particular for recent cases, because you may need to find the average over a longer period of time to see the broader picture. Well, for example, in the last quarter of 2018, they, these might be cases that have just concluded the hearings and therefore the written judgments may not have been delivered. I understand your consideration. You're talking about the average time. Well, J A, what I want to know is, indeed, for some civil cases, they are still pending judgment and the parties have waited for more than six months. I want to know whether you have kept statistics in this regard. How many cases have, have pending judgments for more than six months already? J A, thank you for the question. I do not have this information at hand. Can you go back and see how many cases have had no judgment after six months? Because this is a serious complaint from the legal profession. It seriously undermines the justice system in Hong Kong. I'll go back and see what information I can provide. Four minutes, Dr. Chen Sheng Tai. S J 014 and 015, these are the questions I'd like to ask. 014 sets out the independent external legal advice sought by the D O J before making prosecutorial decisions. Because about external legal advice or outside counsel's advice, well, during Theresa Chang's term, the number was one or either two, but previously, the number of cases involved were much more, four or five cases per year. So that's actually responding to the community's criticism regarding the U G L case, why the D O J had not sought outside legal advice. The criticism was, in particular, whether Theresa Chang as the S J was breaking the existing rules. I don't think the set of figures give us a comprehensive picture because I don't think she is breaking old rules but rather making her new set of rules or bringing a new order to the department. Well, if you just look at the figures, obviously, very clearly you can see how in the recent few years, the practice is so different from the previous years. Now, about outside legal advice, I'd like her to explain whether she has been following certain guidelines or that you are just breaking new ground and setting up a new order, S J. As I explained previously in the Legislative Council, let me repeat the answer now. Before making a prosecutorial decision, in terms of seeking outside legal advice, we need to go through some procedures. We need to consider the need and the manpower situation. If it involves a member of the D O J, usually the case will be briefed out and then different cases may have different needs and also there may be resource implications. Say, if we do not have any counsel within the D O J with that kind of expertise, we may brief out the case. Or that there could be a conflict of interest, that is also a reason for briefing out cases. So in general, we consider the case and it is not the rule that the case must be briefed out if the case involves a former or an incumbent government official. And coming back to S J 014 about briefing out cases. Well, I think for S J 014, 015, I think you're giving us a very bad impression because 014 involves a disqualification of elected councillors. In 2017, 2018, we have In 2017, 2018, we have sixes long, Yang Hua Ching, and also the disqualification of four incumbent political members. The briefing out expenses amounted to 1.5 or $3 million. So we have the impression that this is an under the tables deal and you should just brief out these cases.
As regards seeking independent outside advice by outside councils, you say this is done on a case-by-case basis. If that's a case for SJ014, when you take prosecution action against political members, the cost is always millions of dollars. Can we be told the solicitors firm and/or chambers involved in such cases? And do we have any guidelines concerning such disqualification cases? For SJ015, it's about briefing out of cases. For 014, we're talking about the civil division and the cases for which outside advice was sought. And also set out whether it's a civil or criminal, the DOJ's general principles to go by in briefing out cases. Dr. Basila Leng. From the perspective of public interest and as a matter of our tradition, I'm of the view that the S4J should not seek outside advice for all kinds of cases. Now the S4J is going to apply for funding support to increase manpower. I think they have not applied for a sufficient amount of fund. On the question of non-refoumment cases, earlier this year, the chief justice said that for these cases of non-refoumment cases, after the processing is done by the administration, the workload is now the heavily burdened the courts. So that's why he asked if we can amend the laws to some extent so as to reduce the workload for the, or case law for the judiciary. So my question is, can we really amend the law so as to reduce the number of cases of this category? In the recent case involving the offence of obtaining access to computer with dishonest intent? Well, the administration loses the case. But the conduct involved in those, in the case is something that we don't want to see. For example, in the disqualification of candidates in rural elections, it has to do with the content of Article 104. And very soon, the district council election is appointed and we are going to see hundreds of candidates. Can you improve your work legally speaking? So the returning officers and other front line officers can handle these cases instead of having every case going to the court for judicial review? I think the S4J should take the initiative to look at the possible amendments, especially in the case of the offence of obtaining access to computer with dishonest intent, which you have lost the final appeal. Can we amend the laws so as to make improvements? Thank you for your questions. With regard to judicial review and how we can make improvements, my department is in discussion with the judiciary. Perhaps the JA can say something to update members. We'd like to look at the whole procedure. As for Section 161, offences, obtaining access to computer with dishonest intent, this court of final appeal case has told us that there's something we need to do about our law. We're looking into this. And there's another working group under the Law Reform Commission. In 2012, there was a consultative document and the first report was published in 2013, which we tried to see whether we can do something in respect of legislative amendments. And there's another subcommittee formed under the LLC on cybercrime. And it will look into whether we need to amend or amend our legislation. Dr. Basila Leng. The secretary said that JA would supplement. JA? The legislative amendments that we are talking about are not just targeted at these cases. We are talking about the civil procedure as a whole to see how we can make it more efficient. We are looking into possible amendments with the Department of Justice. We believe in, we are going to present proposals to the AJLL panel very soon. My question is about SJ001. And that is the cases involving disqualification of political members or candidates of election. I think this is a political screening. So that any legal practitioners involved in such matters should be ashamed of themselves. In 2018, the DOJ provided advice in 797 cases. I find this curious. In answering the Dr. Quokka case, you could not tell us the time span on some cases. You cannot tell us the details of the time spent. But you can tell us that this is 797 cases. How do you come up with this figure of 797? And your answer contains this term. The advice given or the number of cases for which advice is required is demand-led. Well, it looks like an economic term. Is the demand generated by the returning officer's referral? Or your Constitutional Affairs and Elections Division would take the initiative to intervene? Well, my department provides legal advice to government departments. Therefore, when the relevant departments or bureaus require advice, they would approach us. If a returning officer needs legal advice on certain matters, he or she can ask the DOJ to provide the legal advice. When we receive such a request, we'll provide the legal advice accordingly. That's the arrangement. In other words, you are passive in providing legal advice. You only give the advice when asked by the departments. This year, Constitutional Affairs and Elections, the breakdown is different this time. The number of times providing legal advice and also legal policy issues is no longer categorized as legal advice standard. In 2018, you provide the legal advice to returning officers in respect of certain matters, including qualification of candidacy and legal policy. So what do you mean by providing, just providing legal advice? Or providing advice on legal policy? In 2018, you provided 797 times of legal advice. How many of them just legal advice? How many of them on legal policies? I asked Mr. Wong to provide a breakdown. Chairman, this is how we arrive at the figures. There's no change to the election cases. Previously, we might not involve, include advice on legal policy. So Mr. Ah's question does not affect the statistics of that particular division on Constitutional Affairs and Elections. Ms. Tanya Chan, SJ012. And that is the number of cases received by the DOJ in respect of surrender of fugitive offenders. And I can see that there are five parties by countries. Question two is about the offences involved by these surrendered persons in the past five years and the offence, types of offences involved. Some of the informations cannot be provided. I can understand that. And then I know that there's one on Romania, the last one. I want the secretary to confirm this. And that is, there's no long-term surrender of offenders agreement with Hong Kong, between Hong Kong and Romania, is that correct? Correct. And if you look at the offences involved, offences involved in the case of Romania. Chairman, you know that we have already read the Fugitive Offenders Amendment Bill. And then some of those are related to commercial crimes. And in this particular case involving Romania, the offences involved, or some of the offences involved are among the nine excluded commercial offences under the new bill for Singapore and other cases of surrender of offenders. Many of those cases are commercial. Many of the offences are commercial in nature. Such being the case, my question is that why do you decide to exclude the nine commercial crimes in the new bill? And after the amendment ordinance is passed, to what extent will your workload on surrender of fugitive offenders increase? This is about United Nations on transnational crime, UNTO. There's a subsidiary legislation. Both Romania and Hong Kong are parties to UNTO. That's why Romania can make a request under UNTO. That's why there are some offences covered by that request. It's difficult to predict the number of cases or the number of requests that we are going to receive. Because the requesting party would make the request when they want to have offenders surrendered. It's something that is difficult to predict. But in the past five years, the numbers can be found. The numbers can be found in the reply. If you look at the total and the actual number of surrendered offenders, there are more cases of requests than the number of offenders' surrender. Because the DOJ will screen the cases and then it would be passed on to the CE and then to the court.
Mr. Ray Chan, four minutes. SJ003, Chairman. But before I follow up on this question put by me, I have a question for Secretary for Justice, some basic concepts. The former Tongwa Group of Hospitals chairman, Mr. Wong, Wong Yinti, asked the secretary in public when there will be same-sex marriage in Hong Kong. Well, the secretary replied that it would definitely happen because this is a rising global trend, it's a matter of when. And then the media made inquiries with the department. And then the administration replied about the IWG, Interdepartmental Working Group on Gender Recognition. Well, I think it's a matter of common sense. I don't know whether the secretary is ignorant or her subordinates are. Because the media asked about same-sex marriage and you replied by referring to the Interdepartmental Working Group on Gender Recognition. These are totally different matters. It's really astonishing. I think at least there should be resources to look into these matters. Well, say in the future, if we are to prepare ourselves for having same-sex marriage in Hong Kong, we need to, for example, do a compare and contrast study with other jurisdictions. There is a pending court case. We don't know the outcome. But if the government loses the case, that means the administration will be required to introduce a new institution in a year or two's time. And it will be, it will not be desirable for you to start work then. So I'm asking about the resources. I'm asking that studies be done. I'm not saying that you should support it or not. Coming back to SJ003, I ask about the IWG's progress. The administration's reply is not included in the secretary's speech. Perhaps this is just too trivial. In the end of 2018, there was a report. And then it is said that the IWG, the government would carefully look into the report. And then together with the outcome of the public consultation, the government can then take it forward and give a report. So when will the report be ready? The first part of the report was released in August last year. Well, let's just hear from you first and see if I have any follow-up question, Secretary.
Thank you, Member, for the questions. At the end of August 2018, we conducted a preliminary study and we published a report. After that, we also held meetings. And we discussed our views on a preliminary basis at the meeting and we also collated the views. So I would say that our work is still ongoing. We cannot guarantee. But we hope that a preliminary report can be.
Well, another preliminary report, Secretary? Because last August, there was already a preliminary report. Well, I should say that it's a report based on our deliberations. Because we need the IWG members to discuss the report and then there would be a report submitted to the government. Because it's the policy bureaus which set up the IWG. We need to submit a report to the policy bureaus. And then, and then we'll see how it goes. Anyhow, the report should be able to be completed this year. Thank you, Secretary. Within this year, right? And that is the first complete report, the complete report for the first stage. And then there is no proposed way forward. And you can't tell us whether there'll be a second round of consultation, right? I think at this stage, it's quite hard to say. Because the first stage after our discussions, we would understand our way forward, the broad directions so that we can then consider our next step and the scope and the direction. I don't think, and I don't want to give any conjecture about the second stage. The speaker's not coming through. Please switch on the mic of Mr. Ray Chan. Before the JR judgment is delivered, can you deploy resources to make preparations? Say, conduct a study and see what will happen if Hong Kong is to introduce?
Say, conduct a study and see what will happen if Hong Kong is to introduce same-sex marriage? About this policy, I think this is under another bureau's purview. The Department of Justice's work is to provide legal advice relevant to the policies under different bureaus. But the IWG was established with members from different policy bureaus, including myself. But I think when it comes to the broad policy, this should come under the policy bureaus. Next, Mister Shu Kachun. I'd like to follow up on JA zero one three. About Mister Holden Chow's question, judicial administration. Just now, the JA replied by saying that whether the court approves a screen application is up to the presiding judge. Whether it's giving evidence via televised link or screen application, screen, it's for protecting witnesses. In fact, in April last year, the bill was passed and read for the third time, such that the criminal evidence ordinance and also another set of rules were amended. So the court would be empowered to provide these facilities to protect witnesses. But according to the concern groups on sexual violence last year, some members of the public filed applications to use a screen in courtroom. The applications were objected to by the other party. And then, without clear explanation to the victims, these victims were deprived of their right to use a screen or to use the televised link, such that they needed to recount the incident in front of the perpetrator. So why is it that the courts refuse to follow the new requirements? And what about the judiciary? Has there been any communication with the victim so that they know their rights? Why is it that they can't use the facilities? I think it's a question for the JA. Thank you, Chairman. Well, these facilities can be provided to the victims on application. And it is up to the court to make a judicial decision based on the applications. And on the basis of judicial independence, it is not appropriate for us to comment on the matter. I think the presiding judge or magistrate would take into account all factors of this case. And it is not for us to comment on individual cases. I'm not talking about individual cases, Chairman. I am talking about what happened last year. Well, we read the bill for the third time. That is, the court has absolute discretion in deciding whether a screen should be used. But when a judge or magistrate decides not to use a screen without any explanation, I'm asking whether there is any communication with the victim or the court so that the judges and magistrates would know that they have the discretion to use the screens. I'm not referring to any particular case. Anything to supplement, JA? Thank you. In fact, when we give reply to Mister Holden Chow's question, that's reply JA zero one three. We mentioned that in the past few years, the approval rate to the screen applications over the past few years were quite high. In fact, we have provided the percentages, the number of applications and number of applications approved. In the High Court, it's close to one hundred percent, District Court, one hundred percent, and also Magistrates Courts, ninety-nine point one percent. So in actual terms, I think you can see from the figures in our reply that the approval rate is very high. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to show concern once again that you should also show more concern about the feelings of victims of sexual violence cases. Mister Eddie Ju.
Thank you, I'd like to pick up on SJ zero one two, the question put by Miss Tanya Chan and also the SJ's reply. I see in the reply, paragraph number one, the administration provided a figure, a table with the number of SFO applications over the past five years and the number of persons surrendered. Now, from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen altogether, there were twenty-three persons who were not surrendered or not yet surrendered despite the applications. I would like to have more details about the twenty-three persons first. Was any of the twenty-three persons detained? I mean, is any person still detained out of the twenty-three? The second question, of the twenty-three persons, how many of them went on trial in a magistrate's court and found not to be suitable for surrender and was discharged? SJ.
Mister Ju mentioned twenty-three persons whom were not surrendered. These cases have been concluded and a decision has been made not to surrender these persons. And I don't think it is appropriate to further comment on any individual cases. I do not have such information at hand either. Mister Eddie Ju.
Chairman, I don't understand. Well, if it's a matter of subtrudacy, I would understand. But I'm just talking about things in general. Of the twenty-three persons, is there anyone, single or plural, that has been detained? Well, SJ, Chairman, I can't answer Mister Ju's question. I don't have any such information at this stage. Now, can you give us information, please? And second, well, according to the secretary's understanding of the F O O, is it that for jurisdictions with which you have signed bilateral agreements or extradition agreements under the present F O O? At what stage can the police detain these persons and to take them to court? Well, let me briefly respond to the latter question. When another jurisdiction makes a request for surrender of a fugitive, well, let's say if it is one of the nineteen jurisdictions, one have yet to take effect. The first thing on receiving this request is for the secretary for, for the Department of Justice to examine whether there is prima facie evidence to proceed. And then a recommendation will be made to the chief executive. With a cease consent, there will be an order to allow this procedure to proceed. And only under such circumstances would the police be able to arrest this person. After the arrest, usually, under the bilateral agreement on the SFO arrangements, there would be stipulations on when committal proceedings should be conducted. And there is a timeframe, which means within the timeframe allowed, the person should be taken to court for committal proceedings. And after committal proceedings, there will be a decision made by the court whether to surrender the fugitive. And that is a committal decision to custody. And ultimately, it is up to the chief executive to sign a certificate to allow the surrender of fugitives. I hope I've answered Mister Ju's question. Next, Doctor K K Kwok.
Well, Chairman, I think it's really frustrating to ask the SJ about the rule of law. She knows nothing about the rule of law. I need to play my part, however. Recently, the American Chamber of Commerce and also the House of Commons Foreign Affairs Committee published a report. They are concerned that the F O O arrangement would make Hong Kong become one country, one point five systems. And there are also UK parliamentary members signing a joint petition, asking the government to look into whether there'll be any impact. Well, the the F O O bill definitely is the crux of everybody's concern at the moment, in particular the business sector. And it is also, it could also be the thin end of the wedge for Hong Kong to lose its independence, the rule of law. Well, as Secretary for Justice, I'd like you to answer the following. If this is of so much importance, when the Taiwanese government on three occasions requested the Hong Kong S A R government to follow up on the surrender of fugitives, the S A R government did not give any answer until very recently, when the government brought up the F O O. I'd like to know about your role.
Secondly, with respect to the F O Amendment Bill and the estimation for the future of Hong Kong, it may affect our economic status. And many businessmen may take their money and go away. This, there will be wide ramifications. So apart from paying visit to liaison office to see special envoys from the mainland, what have you done to liaise with governments where for which there are businessmen working in Hong Kong? And how much have you done to reflect their views to the government? So apart from paying visits to the liaison office, you cannot tell us how many times? So I have, I cannot comment any further. How do you communicate with the mainland authorities? How? Or whether you have reflected our worries to the mainland authorities? But actually, no one knows if you have done that. Thank you for your questions. The F O Amendment Bill is under the charge of a security bureau. And the security bureau has explained to members the work of the bureau. I don't want to repeat what they have told you. And I'm not in a position to supplement anything because they know best about their work. On the legal issues involved, let me say this again to members. As a community with the rule of law, we need to have a system for the surrender of fugitive offenders which, who have come to Hong Kong. So the F O O has provided a mechanism. And the amendment bill would improve the existing mechanism so that we can cover situations which we cannot handle, such as the case involving Taiwan. And this amendment bill would incorporate certain safeguards. You're using my time. Can you confirm that in coming up with the amendment bill, you did not participate in any way? Your time is up. Mister Po Chan, I think we should use our time to ask questions which should be raised. In this forum, I want to ask some questions about SJ oh seven three, the estate of the late Nina Kung. Well, this case has dragged on for a long time. I don't know whether the Secretary for Justice has deployed any manpower to deal with this case of public concern. And if the reply says your colleagues have to handle a lot of duties, just like the fire practice, when a work law is heavy, you may have to consider contracting out the work. And you know, the cost can be reimbursed by the estate. So would you consider contracting out this particular case? Well, unless it's highly sensitive and controversial and there's confidential information involved so that we don't have to wait for so long. Thank you, Mister Chair, for your questions. We've tried to expedite the whole process so that we can see early completion of the matter. Together with China CAM's Trust, Charity Trust, we would like to seek, try to get an agreement. But there are certain disagreements concerning some fundamental issues. We have actually submitted an application to the court on the proposed management plan. But we have to try to interpret the intention of the view, behind the view. I won't go into details because this is now before the court. Although, without compromising privacy or any pending judiciary, are you waiting for instructions? Is the case pending because of that? Or is it because of manpower shortage? So that they just, your department, the Department of Justice, cannot expedite the proceedings? Well, originally, we wanted to reach a consensus with China CAM. But we need the time to communicate and to engage them in a dialogue. So time, some time was needed. We have sought legal advice. We have also come up with our own legal advice. We've now come up with a management plan. We hope that the case can be listed in the court as soon as possible. Is the bottleneck a rest with the listing process or with the manpower shortage? So that the case has been dragging on ever since. I hope I don't need to ask the same question next year. But because last time, we expected to have the outcome by the end of last year. But of course, this is maybe a minor case in the context of the bigger picture. But many people are concerned that this case has dragged on for far too long. And in the meantime, people are concerned about possible cases of abuse of power. So we'd like to get answers quickly. Well, we have already submitted the proposal to the court, so I cannot offer comments. But it always takes time to communicate and understand each other's position. JA oh one six. Reply one one two seven. Or reply JA oh one six, question one one two seven. I was asking about electronic information or I T's used by the court. The reply says that certain courts and proceedings and rules, of course, will be a procedural rules will be amended. Once they are ready, you are going to do some consultation. And that would include the disconsul as well. I find this rather unacceptable. The uploading of information to some electronic platform is a practice by many jurisdictions. The Southeast Asian countries have started to do this in two thousand and nine. So some ten years has passed. So the reply doesn't say that we are all ready technically. But you need to amend the court procedural rules. And I was saying that everything would be ready by twenty nineteen. But the reply doesn't really tell us when this will be done. But instead, you say that you are going, once the procedural rules are ready, you are going to amend the legislation. Do you have a timetable? Can you tell us that it will be ready in six months or nine months? Can you give us further promises as to when everything will be completed? JA, this I T strategy is a gradual approach. We would look at the district courts and also the serving of summons procedure. And we've started work- And we've started work on different sorts of software. This will be a phasing-in approach. We have reached an important stage now. Whether we're talking about technical amendments or legislative amendments, we are doing things concurrently. And we have consulted the stakeholders for some time already. And in April, in respect of the legislative proposals, we are going to consult the members of this council. So we are moving forward on different fronts. Can you give us some sort of timeframe? I know that you have worked very hard in the past 10 odd years, but still, we have not seen the end of the long process. When would the legislative amendments be ready? It's like calling an ambulance. We expect the ambulance to come within the time under the performance stretch before the end of the current term. Can you tell us that within the end of this current legislative term, the amendments will be ready for enactment? As far as possible, we'd like to see the amendments passed within the current term of Legislative Council. But we are talking about amendments both for principal legislation and subsidiary legislation. And the amendments covered a big, wide field. That's why we need time. SJ038, human trafficking. Paragraph three and four of the replies state that the government is of the view that the current law is complete, and there's no need to have further amendments. But the CFI and the Court of Appeal have pointed out that the government has not done its job properly. So in combating human trafficking, as the CS4A has said, human trafficking cannot be tolerated in any way. This offense is not going to be tolerated. So what more would the government do in this regard? Secretary, thank you for your questions. Human trafficking should not be tolerated. We have set up a task force, an interdepartmental task force, to follow up the relevant issues. Within the Department of Justice, we have a special task force, a special division or a designated division headed by a directorate officer, assisted by some other colleagues as well to handle such matters. Apart from cases received by the DOJ, and we'll consider the cases accordingly. We have also been doing some promotion to alert, to make departments more aware of these cases and to look into the possibility of certain cases and find out whether they involve human trafficking. We have four cases in the past five years concerning exploitation. In one case, it's a case involving prostitution offense. We have laws which we can enforce, and we have also do some preventive work. We have been raising awareness, and the DOJ has made suitable arrangements. You talk about the designated division. There are only two prosecutors handling human trafficking cases. Are you talking about this particular division, this dedicated division? Yes, this division is a designated division for such matters. But of course, if there's a need to involve other colleagues, we will make suitable deployments. So they handle cases which might involve human trafficking. They would look after such cases, and they would also do some promotion. Concerning the judgment of Mr. Justice Poon.
Of the BOR is a loophole that needs to be plucked as soon as possible.
Concerning Mr. Justice Poon's judgment, what would you do to follow up the matter?
We note this case, and we note this point. Under the current legislation and the actual circumstances, we have been keeping this in view, and when appropriate, we would take appropriate action. So about the interdepartmental working group led by the Chief Secretary, this is exactly the role that it plays. We thank the Secretary for Justice and the Judiciary Administrator for coming. The next session will begin at 4:45.